...of Monday, December 3rd, 2018. Please rise for the pleasure of the meeting.
(applause). (inaudible) in the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams. Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor O'Clair?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Absent.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Manna?
Present.
Counselor Morales?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present. Okay, we do have a call. At this time, we have a public hearing for the tax classification. So, some people have approached me about why we, why I did the change on this and put it as public, part of the regular meeting. My thought was that to put it as part of the meeting and have a public hearing within would allow the opportunity for those folks that watch at home, they really watched the meeting, and that we could get a better sense. Later on in the meeting, the assessor, Principal Assessor Canoia has a presentation that he would normally give to counsel right after the public hearing, so what I've asked him to do is incorporate that into the public hearing so that, as part of the hearing, and then we can be educated about tax classification. Since this is the first public hearing, I've had an opportunity to participate. Thank you, Mr. Canoia.
Thank you, Chairman Jovan. On behalf of myself, the other members of the Board of Assessors, Diane Kukoska, Fran Biscay, we have a lot of information on classification and the tax rate and property taxes for this year. Let's see, the purpose of classification and the options, and the reason we're having this public hearing and the votes following is, according to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, it allows a shift in the tax allocation. You can have a single tax rate, which Town of Southbridge has had historically, or you can shift part of the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. This doesn't change the total tax levy for the town, but it determines what percentage each class of property owners will bear. So, what classification doesn't do, it doesn't determine the tax rate for the town, that's really simple math, which we'll get into in a little while. It doesn't determine how much money can be raised, that's Proposition 2 and 1/2, and we'll go into how much money could be raised by the town. And it doesn't determine how much money will be raised. That's really a basis of all your budget appropriation votes and other charges, subtracted from all of our other revenue sources. So, the things we're going to be discussing tonight, and I know this, it's not repetitious, but we do, we do talk about the same things every year because that's what we talk about here. So, new growth, how that affects us, recertification, revaluation, what our property values are this year, how they changed, what the total town value is, how that comes into play, what the tax levy and the tax rate is going to be, our levy limit, the excess levy capacity. Incidentally, I want to say now, there's a form that I have to pass around that has to be sent into the Department of Revenue following the votes that you'll take later on, and I have it here, I just want to make sure I mention that now because it's going to be a little bit different process this year, so I just want to let you know that I'm going to be passing that around. The classification factors, examples of a tax shift and what that would do, and tax-wise, how do we compare to our neighbors, to the rest of the state, and to ourselves from last year? New growth, what is it? Well, it's basically new houses, new developments, new factories, new condominiums, new personal property. And how does it affect taxes? It allows the town to raise additional money while only minimally affecting the taxpayer, existing taxpayers and the ones from last year. How does it affect the levy limit? It allows the town to raise more money under the constraints of Prop 2 and 1/2 as inflation grows and expenditures grow. So, for this year, our new growth, we have additional $12,162,000 in value. That allows us to raise an additional $252,000 in property tax. As you can see in this chart, excuse me for just a moment, Diane, we have a handout for all of these slides, which Diane Kukoska will pass out to the members of the audience in the town council. Some of it may be small, but there are blowups of the sheets at the end of the, on the last couple of pages there. So, anyway, so this is our new growth of the year. We have $252,000 in additional taxes based on new growth. And as you can see, the lion's share of that came from personal property, which is business equipment. Secondarily, it came from residential class and a little bit from the commercial and industrial classes. This chart gives an illustration, as you can see, the lion's share is personal property. The total taxable town value, so this year, the residential class makes up $808 million, and I'm going to round for simplicity, $808 million, which is 78% of the entire tax base. And the commercial, industrial, personal property make up the remaining 22%. This graphically illustrates it, showing again the residential making up the lion's share. This chart here, it shows the breakdown of the commercial, the blue is the residential class and the red is the commercial, industrial, personal property, for simplicity, called the CIP classes. As you can see, in 2008, the residential class made up 83.6%, and that declined over the years, up until, I think it's 2018, the residential class inched up a little bit more, and it inched up a little more, a little bit more again this year in the total breakdown of property taxes and the town value. Revaluation, recertification, so we have to, according to state law, we have to recertify, it's currently every four years, it'll be moving to every fifth, five years after the current year. We were last done in 2016, 2020 is our next certification year, so we'll be beginning that somewhere around March or April. And revaluation is when the state comes in and recertifies you. Revaluation, we have to do the same thing every year. We update all of our property values annually, we're required to do it, but the state doesn't come in and certify you every year. You still have to do it based on all of the standards. So, and the reason for that is we have to come to full and fair cash value each year, in this case, it's all the property is valued as of January 1, 2018, and the values are based on comparable arms-length sales all across the residential class, you know, the comps, as you hear, and in the commercial, industrial class, it's based on that, but there aren't as many sales, so you also do it based on the income approach, which is rents, expenses, how much cash flow a business can generate, which is, will indicate what that property is worth, that commercial property is worth. Bottom line to that is, your property taxes are based on your proportional share of town value, so your value has to be correct. And again, it's the law. Individual proportions change from year to year, some sectors of the market get hot in a given year, and they fall just as fast in a downturn in the market. So, how do we do that? We visit properties all the time. So, the state requires a cyclical inspection program. Used to be, we'd have to visit every property once every nine years, I think they've just extended it to once every 10 years. So, there's approximately 6,000 properties in town, that means we go to about 600 a year, just on this, on this program here. And we do that to make sure we, capturing the property is accurately as possible. Sales review, I visit almost every house that sells in town. Building permits, every time somebody takes out a building permit, myself or a member of my staff goes out there to make sure our records are accurate. Recertification, revaluation, field review, the state, every four, three years, four years, or it'll be five when the next one, they come out and then they check what we've done, they do the same thing, and they'll do a data quality study. We send out an annual income and expense questionnaire to all businesses. So, if you own an apartment building of four or more units or a commercial property, we mail you something every year and ask, okay, how many units do you have? What do you rent? How much square footage? What are your expenses? What capital improvements? So, we follow that very, very closely. Forms of list is a return we send out to all businesses that have personal property or business equipment, you know, it's, they have to fill it out by law, and they tell us what they have, and if they don't, they're, they're under certain legal jeopardy. We do inspections based on taxpayer requests. People call me every now and then and say, hey, can you take a look at my property? I don't know if it's, I don't know if you're accurate, I think you might be too much, too low, whatever, I want to know, I just want to be sure it's accurate. And abatement application, so we go to a lot of properties every year. I mean, do we still make mistakes? Of course we do, but, you know, we're out there trying to get this stuff right. So, in the current year, based on the sales that occurred in 2017, the valuation changes. Single families appreciated in value about 7.5%. Condominiums went up quite a bit more at 16%. Two- and three-family buildings went up 11.9%. Apartments over four units, last year, they went up really dramatically, but the sales this year didn't show that continued, but it did go up a little bit, but it's more, you know, fits and spurts. Land actually went down by about 4.2%. Overall, then, the residential class went up in value about 7.5%. The commercial and industrial classes, they were flat, they barely changed at all. Actually, so I'll go back to that for a second. The reason this is important is, every year, the property taxes are based on your value and your proportion of the total town. So, as the real, as your property value goes up or down, your taxes, the share you're paying of the total tax levy, or tax burden, changes based on that. Okay? So, the tax levy, how it's determined by all voted appropriation and expenditures, the state and county charges, so pretty much everything you vote on and the state charges. It's paid for by using state aid and reimbursements, local receipts, excise tax, other fees, building permit fees, et cetera, with the enterprise funds, any free cash appropriated, stabilization or transfers, the remainder is the tax levy. And so, for 2019, the tax levy is going to be $21,124,553. So, the tax rate, you take that number I just mentioned, the tax levy, $21,124, you have the total town value, which we already talked about, $1,365,33, and you simply divide it, and that yields a tax rate. In this particular, in this year, that tax rate is going to be $20.38 per $1,000 valuation. So, compared to last year, as you can see here, the levy is $21,124,000. Last year, the levy was $20,237,000. That's an overall increase of $887,052, or 4.38%. So, that's the overall increase. If you subtract new growth, which this year is $252,364, that gives you a change after new growth of $634,688, or 3.14%. The reason those two numbers are distinct is, the new growth is generally new taxpayers, new equipment, new sources, so it, the tax levy hits the existing residents a little bit differently after you subtract the new growth. Prop 2 and 1/2, it was written into law under Chapter 59, Section 21(c), it defines what a levy ceiling is, your levy limit and your maximum allowable levy, and what is your excess levy capacity in any year. So, the levy ceiling, as part of Prop 2 and 1/2, what that states is, in any year, property taxes can't exceed 2.5% of the total assessed value, or the tax rate can't be more than $25 per $1,000 valuation. So, for Southbridge, again, our town value is $1,365,000. If you multiply that by .025, that means our levy ceiling is $25,913,000, which we have to stay below, and we are. The levy limit and the maximum allowable levy, so Prop 2 and 1/2 only allows you to raise your levy limit and the amount of property taxes, a certain amount each year. So, the formula is basically your previous year's levy limit, you add 2.5% of that, you add your new growth, and that gives you your levy limit for the current year. To that, you would add any debt exclusions or overrides, and that gives you your maximum allowable tax levy. So, the numbers for Southbridge, last year, our levy limit was $20,829, multiply that by 2.5, increase it by 2.5%, and it's additional $520,000. As we've already said, our new growth is $252,000, which brings our levy limit for this year to $21,603,94. So, in addition, that's increased by the debt exclusion for Bay Path, which the voters voted on several years ago, by $219,940, sorry, I got a wrong number there, by $219,000. So, that'll, that means our maximum allowable levy for this year, that we, Proposition 2 and 1/2 would allow us to raise taxes, property taxes to, is $21,823,043. So, this chart here shows you what the maximum allowable tax levy is, in other words, what we could raise under Prop 2 and 1/2, and what we are actually raising. So, you can see here, we could raise $21,823, but we're raising $21,124, so that yields an excess levy capacity of $698,490, which we could raise under Prop 2 and 1/2, but the council and the town chose not to. As you can see, over the last few years, we've left considerable amount, we've raised considerable amount below our levy limit. Really, we increased that in 2016 to a much bigger reserve. This money isn't lost, at any time, you could raise up to the levy limit, but you couldn't recapture the previous taxes. Okay, so one of the things that classification also allows is a residential exemption. So, what that means, and this is kind of complicated, but it allows up to a 20% discount of the average residential value to owner-occupied residential properties. But to do that, the residential class has to pay the same amount of total dollars, so if you give a residential exemption, that increases the tax rate for all residential properties, both owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. And basically, what it does, it shifts the burden from lower-valued homes to vacant land, higher-priced homes, and non-residential homes in a town like Southbridge. In other communities, I think there are 15 communities that do this, Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, a number on Martha's Vineyard, and some of the other bedroom communities around Boston, there are 15 of them. Basically, what you're doing is, you're shifting the burden to people who don't live there, who don't, who come in, like college students, or Martha's Vineyard, or Nantucket, I believe, or Turo, or people who, summer homes only, you shift. So, another part of it, all vacant residential land is taxed at the higher rate. Again, this works in communities with a large number of vacation homes or non-occupied, non-owner-occupied properties to shift the burden onto. It doesn't work on a town like Southbridge. I think the nearest community that does this to us is Marlboro, and then all the rest are down the Cape or right around Boston. So, the Board of Assessors strongly recommends against adoption of this exemption. The classification factor, so Mass Law requires the council to adopt a factor between 1 and the minimum residential factor. It allows a maximum shift of 50% to the CIP classes. We've determined that the minimum residential factor is .859236, so you can, the council could adopt a factor, any factor between 1.0 and 8.859236. A factor of 1.0 means each property class would be taxed at the same tax rate. So, some examples of shifts of the various classes. Now, I know this is very small, I've got a blowup on the next slide, and in your packets there, the last two pages have full-page sheets of this. So, if there's a single tax rate, the tax rate would be 2038 for residential and commercial. And if you shifted at the maximum, the tax rate on the residential could go down to 1751, but because of the makeup, the proportion of residential to commercial, industrial, personal property, the commercial, industrial rate would have to go up to 3057. So, this here gives some examples. So, the third column, all, the highlighted part in the bottom is all the single tax rate. The average single-family property tax bill will be 3778, the average commercial will be 10,766, and the average industrial will be 10,992. Going above, you can see the various shifts, but just to illustrate the maximum shift of 50%, if you did that, the average residential house would drop to 3246, which is a savings of about $520. However, to do that, the average commercial would go from 10,766 to 16,150, which is, what, about a 5,300 increase? So, to pay for 500, you have to charge somebody else 5,000, the average commercial, and I think it's fairly similar on the average industrial. This chart here shows examples of the actual taxes and how each class of property is affected this year. Again, you have a, your last page has, has this one where you can read it pretty clearly, and on the screen, I've blown it up a little bit, as much as possible, and have all the information, but, so the average condominium, if you remember earlier, I showed the condominiums increased in value pretty dramatically. Well, by them increasing in value, they're picking up a larger proportion of the tax levy. So, the average tax bill on a condominium this year will be $1,787, and that's an increase of $251, or 16.36%. The average single-family tax bill will be 3,778, that's an increase of 20384, 5.7%. The average two- and three-family is 30, the bill this year will be 3,403, and that's an increase of $310, or 10.06%. Vacant land, because they went down in value a little bit, their tax bills, the average bill will be 37587, which is a decrease of $10, or 2.59%. The over-four-unit apartment buildings, their taxes are actually pretty flat, it's a decrease of $27, or 0.4%. Average commercial, it's a decrease of $380, 3.42%, and the average industrial, decrease of 346, or 3.05%. This is all very fluid, it changes year to year, and some years, certain classes of property get clobbered, based on the value, and in some, some years, they're moderate, in some years, you know. So, classification factor, the Board of Assessors recommends a factor of 1.0, a single tax rate for all classes of property. Tax-wise, how do we compare? So, according to the statistics from the Department of Revenue, and I do this every year, and this is all online, if anybody wanted to look it up. So, for last year, 2018, the average tax bill statewide was 5,627. The average tax bill in Southbridge last year was 3,575. So, last year, the average tax bill in Southbridge was $2,052 less than, or 36.5% less than the state average in terms of average single-family property tax bills. So, in fiscal 18, Southbridge ranked 276th out of the 3636 analyzed communities in regards to the smallest average single-tax, single property, single-family property tax bill, with a lower 17.8%. This year, as I said, the average single-family, at a tax rate of 2038, the average single-family property tax bill will be $3,778. Excuse me, just a minute. Excuse me. So, this chart here, I included, it just shows over the last 25 years, how Southbridge and Maroon has compared to the state average in single-family property tax bills. So, how do we compare to our neighbors? This chart right here shows fiscal year 2019, us and all of our neighbors' tax bills. Southbridge, this year, our tax rate is 2038, our average property tax bill is 3,778. Stirbridge, their tax rate is a little bit less, 1915, but their average single-family property tax bill is $5,648, plus they have CPA, Community Preservation Act in place, so they pay a 3% surcharge in addition. Charlton, tax rate 1477, their average tax bill 4,162. Auburn has a split tax rate, so their residential is 1842, and the average person, average single-family pays 4844. Dudley, 1350 is the tax rate. This year, they had a bunch of overrides and debt exclusions they paid for. Their property taxes went up quite a bit, but it's now 3,449. Webster, their tax rate is 1533, and the average tax bill is 4,039. Town of Ware, I usually compare it to us because it's very similar, but they haven't set their tax rate, and they don't have the numbers yet. So, a couple of other important things to pick up from this chart here is, with the exception of Auburn, all of them have a single tax rate. But Webster has formally had a split tax rate for years and years and years, and each year, they've been trying to reduce it and get it down to a single tax rate. And every time you do that, there's additional pain to the residential class. However, they finally, this year, succeeded. Last year, they had a split rate, and now they're down to one tax rate. Stirbridge also formally had a split tax rate, and they got back to a single tax rate in 2015. All right. So, I like to include this every year, there are property exemptions that are available to help seniors and disabled people who qualify, people with a blindness disability, and other various, various programs. My telephone number, our office telephone number is 764-5404. We have brochures, it's online brochures. Call us, and we'll be glad to help anybody through any part of it, questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So, given this is the public hearing, I'll open it up to the residents or audience first, if anybody wishes to ask any questions on this presentation or the public hearing portion.
Good evening, Mike Marketti, 120 Marie Avenue, I don't know if you can hear me. This doesn't seem to be working too well. There was a lot here to digest. I know last year, I asked that this be put on the website before this hearing, so we could at least take a look at it and come up here with some questions about it. There's just a couple of things. First of all, he always, Will Canoia always comes up here and says, talks about the difference in how much we're paying, but he doesn't include how much the homes are worth in these other communities. I know I've looked at homes in Stirbridge, and they're quite a lot more expensive than homes in Southbridge. I also know that every year, I've come up here, and Will is ready to jump here on what I just said. That's all right. Every year, I've come up here, and I've always said, you know, I think that, I don't mind paying my fair share of taxes, but this year, it seems like the burden has been shifted to single-family households, while commercial and industrial, it's been lowered, so that doesn't seem equal to me. It seems like you're shifting it to the single families. This year, it's different for me because I have retired. I've retired, and so now, my wife and I are on fixed incomes. So, to say that I'm going to pay $200 more a year, but a company's going to be paying a little bit less, it doesn't seem very equitable to me. I don't think, I think that, I've always argued every year, we should have a split tax rate. I know other communities are going away from that. But I'm not asking for a 50% tax shift here, I think 10% would be, would make it a little bit easier, especially on people like me on fixed incomes. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I asked for a list of all the real estate demands and tax titles. I'm not mentioning any names, I'm not up here to embarrass, embarrass anyone, but I know that there's over $3 million owed to this town in past taxes. Taxes that are owed to this town, and I don't see why we, you at least could try to negotiate with these people, even if you got 50 cents of the dollar, that would help a little bit. So, that's another thing that I'm not too happy about. But overall, as I said, I'm not, I don't have, I'm not, I don't have a problem paying my fair share. I just don't think it's right that it's every year, single-family household pay a higher proportion, and this year, it looks like the condominiums are going to be paying even more. And as far as the shift goes on, on properties that are not owner-occupied, there are a lot of people in this town who are not, don't even live in Southbridge, they live in Florida, they live all over the place. But I know what would happen if you raised their taxes, they would just pass it on in rent. But have you looked at the, I've looked at the rents lately, and they're quite high in Southbridge, so I think that they're pretty much raising the rents anyway, whether you pass on the taxes on them or not, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marketti. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else? Okay. Counselors? Any questions? Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Marketti, for coming up and voicing your concerns. I did see that email come across that you requested in regards to the amount of money that's owed to the town with past taxes. I know, past due taxes, I know in the past, that we had one town manager, Christopher Clark, he shamed the people. He put their names in the newspapers, and people started paying. That is something to think about. They owe us money. They want to do business in this town, they owe us money. I did see one particular name on there, probably about a hundred times. I know we're never going to get money from them, but we know what that was all about. I do have a question for Mr. Canoyer in regards to new growth. Why is it so low this year? And is there something that you can get us over the last five years, just so we can, we can do a comparison or something?
Yeah. So why is it so low this year? The five-year average is two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. So, last year was, I believe, two hundred and fifty thousand approximately. So, what brought that four hundred and fifty-two thousand last year? A number of things. We had a bunch of solar fields coming online. I don't recall the exact amount, but it was over a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new growth. In addition to that, Tag Housing down on Maria Avenue, that was formally under a forty-year program with the state, where they didn't pay local property taxes. They paid a state excise tax, and we were reimbursed on the cherry sheet for our part of it. That forty-year agreement expired last year, so that property, and I don't recall exactly what it's worth, but my educated guess is it probably added about eighty thousand dollars in new property tax and new growth last year. So this year isn't really low. It's low compared to last year, as I said, and it's funny, I'm sure the town manager and the finance director know me at the, at our budget meetings, "Will, what's the new growth going to be this year?" And I, and my, you know, last year was four hundred fifty-two thousand. And I said, "Nope, we're going to go with the five-year average," because new growth, it's exactly what it says, it's new growth. And there's just, I mentioned what we had last year, we're basically in line with our five years, five-year average.
Thank you very much. You always do a wonderful job explaining things. I do tend to agree with Mr. Marketti, though, on a couple of points, and, and I've heard it from other people too in the past, that the, the burden of the taxes is shifted to the, single-family homes. And I, I do understand why we, we keep the industrial end of it a little bit lower, and we don't shift the burden over to them, because we want to attract new businesses, and we want to keep the businesses we have here. But the taxes that are owed to this town, three million dollars, we need to do something. There needs to be some type of campaign to out them, at least the top ten or top twenty or something, to get them to pay. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, it's public record. Do it. Get, get the money. Threaten them, tell them, "Your name's going to appear in the paper, you know, and you're going to be, like, on record, do something." We need the money. That's all. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to make one more comment. So if you were to shift the tax burden to the commercial-industrial-personal-property class, there's sometimes unintended consequences. So what I'm looking at right here, and you can't see it, it's way too small, but it's basically a top twelve taxpayers in town. The top one is Southbridge Associates, the Hotel Conference Center. If we shifted the tax burden, they would pay more. Fine. Our second top taxpayer in town is Rosemead Apartments. That's a residential class, so if we shifted the tax burden, they would pay less. Our second largest taxpayer would drop in tax. Our third largest taxpayer is Southbridge Associates, too, another corporation, which is the rest of the American Optical Complex, they would pay more. The next one would be the Southbridge Fair Investors, another commercial property, they would pay more. The next one is United Lends Company, they would pay more. The next one is Hyde's Tool, they would pay more. The next one is a local property owner, who owns five million dollars in property, but they're all residential. He would pay quite a bit less. The next one is Brookside Terrace, South Village, they would pay less. The next one, actually, it goes down. But the, the point is, out of our top twelve taxpayers, all valued over five million dollars, some would pay more, some would pay less. Residential would pay less, they're classified as residential, according to state law.
Good point. Thank you. Councilor Claire? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, are you yours?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is to, this is to Will. So Rosemead, Brookside Terrace, corporations and entities that own, you know, what would be, in every other setting, considered a commercial property of, you know, four or more units type of thing, are still classified as residential as far as tax purposes go?
Yes, exactly. According to state law, they're taxed, they're classified as residential. That's a bug that a lot of cities and towns have. Recently, Worcester went through the same discussions, and they considered trying to get, by local option, trying to pass a law where they could tax them as commercial. Ultimately, the City Council of Worcester, again, it's an uphill battle anyway, they would have had to convince the legislature to reverse what they were doing, but the City Council of Worcester said, "No, we're not going to do that," because ultimately, who lives at a place like Rosemead, a resident's just like us. So in Worcester, they must have got some political heat. But beyond that, they would have had to change the law to do that. The law says, if it's residential, it's residential, even if it's, you know, two hundred units.
Even if the owners are obviously making a profit?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Will. First of all, thanks for your presentation, as you always do, it's always detailed. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, I might have asked some of these last year. One is if you could, if you could give, for the, for the people who are watching, a quick description of, because you didn't mention it in your presentation, the small-business exemption.
Okay. So the small-business exemption is in, I think I have something on it, it's a very confusing one. There are only five cities and towns that offer it. One of them is Auburn, and I talk to Auburn all the time. They have no idea why they ever offered it, but now they can't take it away. Bear with me just a second, I think I have something on it. So the small, small-commercial exemption, it shifts the tax rate up to ten percent between properties occupied by qualifying small businesses onto the other commercial-industrial properties. So the commercial-industrial property rate would rise, and there's a small exemption given, up to ten percent, given to properties that qualify. This exemption goes to the property owner, not the business. So, for example, if, I don't, I'm going to mix this up, because I don't want to offend anybody anywhere, but if a bank owned a little strip mall, and they rented to Will's garage, and Will qualified, so the bank would get the exemption. Okay? The industrial properties, don't, any industrial property doesn't qualify for this exemption, only commercial, but they share the cost of it, the shift of the burden goes to them. The value must be less than a million dollars, and it must have less than ten employees. There are only five communities statewide that use this, to my knowledge. I, even the people who do it don't see the value of it. Somewhere along the line, somebody did it to, actually, I don't want to get into that, I don't want to editorialize, I just don't see the value of it, quite frankly.
Okay. Well, thank you. Also, I was curious, can you, can you, do you have any idea why the commercial and industrial rates basically didn't change while the residential rates did significantly?
Yeah, because the residential, there's a very active market in properties buying and selling. We have, in the, single-family class, we have over two percent of the properties sell each year, usually more than that, a couple hundred sales a year. So you have a lot of activity, a lot of things to watch and meter it. In the commercial-industrial, what do you have? You have one or two, maybe three sales, tops. So on those, income and expense questionnaires that we send, send out, what you do is you follow, okay, are the rents going up? Because if the rents are going up, that means there's more operating income, and that income that the property owner can get capitalizes to a higher value. Additionally, commercial values, industrial values are based on what's called the capitalization rate. So whatever cash flow you get, you know, your income minus expenses, that gives you a cash flow, and then whatever the interest rates are, that capitalizes to what, to a value. When interest rates are low, the value is pretty high, but as they start going up, interest rates start going up a little bit, the value doesn't go up, it kind of maintains where it is. In a, in a lowering income, interest rate market, commercial values go up quite a bit, but we're at a pretty low interest rate market and starting to increase now.
Okay. And the last question I had is, kind of goes back to what Councilor Manne said a little while ago. I was curious, if you can, if you can explain, if you can tell me a little bit, I think you mentioned that we have roughly six thousand residential properties in town?
No, not six thousand residential, approximately six thousand properties.
Total, okay. Roughly, how many, how does that split out as far as, in residential, how many are, are single, single, single families and versus ones that are actually rental properties? Do you know?
That's a, that's a great question. I don't think you can see that very well, but, so, there's fifty-eight hundred fifty-three taxable properties, and there's a couple hundred exempt properties, town, you know, town-owned and church-owned and so forth. So, one-on-ones, which are, single-family, there are twenty-seven hundred twenty-three single-family houses. What was the rest of the question?
And what, how do that split as far as the other properties that were, that are essentially commercial rental properties?
Well, there aren't a lot of commercial properties.
Well, I'm thinking in the sense of like, like what Councilor Claire was raising about, about them being, they're, they're in fact, commercial properties, but they're rental, you know, like some of the, some of the bigger landlords, the, all of the various triple-deckers and stuff, and the three and four and five apartment-type complexes.
Yeah, I think, so the state class has us classify that, we have to report that to them, of, there is two hundred and fifty-five apartment, apartment buildings, over four-unit apartment buildings. And they classify, they group it together, I can't remember exactly, and then there's another class, over eight-unit apartment buildings, and it's just a handful, a small handful, twenty, thirty. I just don't know offhand.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. A lot of the questions already been asked here, but the last one I had was, you had mentioned, or maybe you can explain a little bit, since this is the first year I've been on the town council. You mentioned about adopting a budget requiring less than maximum allowed tax levy?
Yep.
That the town, town council constantly, how long's that been going on with the town council doing less than that maximum tax levy?
That's another good question.
Because you talk about, like, almost seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's another very good question. So, this particular year, excess levy capacity, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, last year, eight hundred and eleven, year before that, nine twenty-nine, eight seventy-two. And then, the years prior to that, it was about two hundred, one sixty-four, two oh six, one eighty. And going back to the nineties in Europe, going back to the nineties, we would go a hundred dollars to, below that levy limit, they would tax every possible penny. So the late nineties and through the two thousands, it was, it went up quite a bit, you know, or, in the case you're asking, taxed below the levy limit by quite a bit, but back then, it was right to the levy limit. And most communities do that, they go right to the levy limit. Some don't, we don't. But, so, it's been very healthy for the last four or five years. Five years ago, you know, like I said, it was two, a couple hundred thousand dollars four, five, six, seven years ago.
That's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To Will. So the, you know, Counselor Steve's asked about the, you know, the zero percent valuation increase on the commercial property.
Yep.
And you talked about the interest percentage rates impacting the, you know, the change in percentage on the actual tax valuation for this year, which, for, you know, commercial and industrial constitutes, you know, three, almost three and a half percent decreases. Can you explain that a little bit? Can you explain what that would look like in years, in years to come, if the current trends were to remain?
Well, I can't predict the future, but I, I can't predict the future. If rents go up, their values go up. There's obviously the interest rates that put a drag on that, of course. If interest, if rents stay the same and interest rates fall, the values go up. So, it's, if rents go up, their values will go up, I think is the only way I can put it. I don't know where interest rates are going to go, it's just, they can't go any lower, they're not going to go much lower.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood. So I'm looking for something tangible, right? So when we're looking at a zero percent increase on the valuation for commercial properties, I would assume that if you were seeing, you know, rental increases and things of that nature, that you would be able to track it, and you would have some sort of measurable amount or dollar-figure percentage that you could kind of point to and say, "This is why you're seeing a three or three and a half percent decrease on the average."
Well, their values haven't gone down. The tax rate went down, that's why their, their taxes went down a little bit, it's because the tax rate was reduced. So I think maybe this will help answer it. So the way we value all the commercial-industrial apartment buildings is based on the income approach. So we track what their rents are every year, and every year, we send out these income and expense questionnaires. Like, for example, if you owned an apartment building, I would say, "Okay, we're basing your four-unit apartment building on, you're getting a thousand dollars a month, okay, if it's four units, good." And so next year, I'll send it, and that's what we're valuing it. Next year, we'll send you that same questionnaire, and you'll say, "I'm still getting a thousand dollars a month." So that means your property value hasn't really gone up. If you were getting eleven hundred or twelve hundred, then your value, and if, if that was indicative of the wider market, then your value would, not your value, but that class of property value would go up. But the, the rents really haven't gone up. On the multifamily, they have. However, last year, the multifamilies went up at a, I think we talked here about the condominiums going up sixteen percent or something. Last year and the year before, multi-values skyrocketed that way. So, every year, a class of property, there's one or two that really gets hot in the market. It seems like it's single-family all the time, and it is, but others tend to go up faster and fall faster. Like the apartment buildings, back in the two thousand seven era, age, era, their property taxes were going up twenty percent a year, because their values were outpacing everybody else. But then, when the market changed, they shot down even faster. So it, it's, it's dynamic.
I think, maybe I'm misunderstanding, because when you're looking at, it was, I believe, I saw a seven percent increase on the residential, and then a zero percent increase on the commercial.
Is that on value, or is that on property tax?
Valuations.
Okay.
And so I would assume that without any kind of measurable increase on the valuation for commercial, you wouldn't see a decrease. So I'm, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out why that is, and I thought that you had touched on it with the interest rates, and it would, but...
Well, that's just a factor that kind of held them, but in addition, there hasn't been any increase in their rents, which, and there hasn't been any evidence to show that they've gone up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if I might add, vacancy plays a big factor in this as well. So if you, I mean, there are some places that are doing quite well, but if you drive a lot of our central streets, you see very, very high vacancies, and when there's high vacancies, that depresses the value as well, so...
Okay. The purpose of my question is, you know, with, with the residential market, with, you know, the real estate, you can put your finger on trends, you know, you can, you can estimate from year to year where the valuation's going to go based on, you know, the, the sales and everything that you see.
Right.
And I guess I was just trying to find a similar trend that we might be able to look at with the commercial, but it doesn't sound like there is one.
Again, it's all about rents. I mean, you, you look around, and you look on Main Street, and you say, "Okay, yeah, they should all be able to, you know, increase their rents by ten percent." I mean, that gut, gut feeling is, that would be very difficult, you know?
All set?
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Canoyer. And I know, no question asked is ever a stupid question, the only ones are the ones that are asked, but this sounds kind of silly, I think, but how do you know if they're telling you the truth about the rents?
That's a really good question. So any, you, I wouldn't say disregard, but you don't put... So, any, you, I wouldn't say disregard, but you don't put a lot of weight in any individual, but in the aggregate, you piece, you pull your information together. You also look at, you know, what, what advertisements are and so forth. Yeah, people tell me all the time, I can't rent that place for anything, or, I get $400 a month, it's like, yeah, sure you do. And who lives there? Yeah, my daughter, or my son, whatever. You, you don't, it's, you do what's called economic rents, that you have an actual rent, which is what they report to you, but you do the economic as well. If you have four properties, four, you know, four apartment, you, each, four of you own four apartment buildings, you kind of weigh all the information. One of them is probably going to be a little high, and that's why he has a lot of vacancies. One of them's going to be a little low, they never have vacancies, but they could get more, they're just not, you know, and, and if anybody bought that property, they would raise the rents to what's called the economic rent, and the two in the middle are probably, you know, the correct numbers. And you do that on hundreds of properties, or...
Makes sense. Also?
Thank you.
Counselor Steve?
Thanks. Two quick questions, also on rent. Do you happen to have data on what the trends have been for commercial and residential rents in town over the years?
Uh, I don't have the trends, no. I can tell you, over the last couple of years, they've been flat, they haven't really changed very much, because I get those incoming, in, those questionnaires in, and I, you know, spreadsheet them and take a look at them, and it's like, okay, yeah, they, they, they haven't gone up, they might have even gone down, but they haven't gone up. So, I, I, the trends, no, it's just really, you know, appraisal is more of an art than a science in many, many ways, so...
Okay, and the other question I had also, isn't right related also, is there any effect on the property values and the commercial rents, uh, when you're renting to churches and other nonprofit organizations? How does that affect those things?
No, that's a great, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked it. So, churches and nonprofit have an influence to all of this that I didn't mention, and I'm glad you brought it up. So, for example, um, there is a commercial property on Duphall Street, the old Biscay Auto Parts, which was bought by a church. So, that property is no longer on the taxable rolls.
Yeah.
So, there's many properties around the hospital, where the hospital has bought doctors' offices, now the hospital owns them, they're no longer in the tax rolls, they fall into the charitable, charitable exemption of the hospital. Um, there's a couple of, there's a few other churches like that as well, although I can't think of any. But each time that happens, it lowers the percent, the taxable value paying, part of the property tax, and that influences part of the property tax increase to other, other classes of property. So, but getting back to your question about what the churches pay for rents, I would say, I would say that's kind of like the one, the illustration I just made of the four of you, you know, myself renting to my, if I, if this was the case, if I rented to the church that I belong to, that's really not an arm's-length transaction. Uh, I might be giving them a better deal, because it's my church, or because the space may be empty otherwise, or, so, it, it does, that, that affects, that doesn't really affect the schedules dramatically in what we do, because we would discount what they're charging to a church, if it's below market.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking...
We use market rents.
Okay, I was kind of picturing like, like Hamilton Street, that's had a couple of storefront churches on it, and...
Right.
You know, I was thinking that, I was kind of picturing that when I was asking the question, so how would that affect it? When you, when the landlord, the landlord is not, not necessarily, as far as I can understand, directly related to the church, so...
Right.
Doesn't have any effect?
So, the answer is, we look at what the market rent would be. I mean, right next door to some of those churches, you have empty, empty storefronts, so...
Right, unfortunately.
So, the rents down that way may be a little depressed to begin with.
Right.
So, you, you have to weigh it, you have to weigh everything.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Well, um, thank you for your presentation tonight. I just had one question. So, when you figure out the levy limit, you have the FY 2018 levy limit?
Yep.
Um, and then you go off of that. But when I'm looking at your chart, at the excess levy capacity, last year's actual tax levy is a different number than that levy limit that you used to, to do this year's. What, what accounts for that difference? So, you had $20,237,501 for the actual tax levy in 2018, then when you go over to your levy limit for FY 2000 levy limit, you have that increase of about approximately $600,000. So, how, were there changes within appropriations throughout the year that accounted for that? So, what accounts for that difference?
Um, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't really quite follow the question completely.
Okay, so if you look at page four...
Yeah.
Of your presentation.
Page four?
Yep.
Let me get a hard copy off my desk.
Okay.
Page four?
Page four.
Oh, what slide number?
Uh, 23, slide number 23.
Okay.
Does say page four on the bottom of the presentation that you had.
Okay.
Okay? So, in that chart, when you, you go over to actual tax levy for 2018?
Yeah.
You had an actual tax levy of $20,237,501.
Yeah.
And then, when you crossed over for the levy limit for this year, you have it at $20,829. So, what accounts for that $500,000-plus difference?
So, 2.5% and new growth, so...
Well, no, that, that's your actual tax levy from last year. So, your actual tax levy for last year was $20,237.
Yeah.
Then, when you start for this year, you're saying, we're starting with a tax levy of $20,829. What is the difference there?
$20,829. I'm sorry, I'm not quite following you.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying, Jessica. You show the tax levy limit for 2018 to be $20,237,501, but when you go to, um, chart 22...
To figure out your maximum allowable tax levy, you started off with a different actual levy limit.
Oh, you're not starting with the levy, you're starting with the levy limit from the previous year.
Okay, but the maximum allowable levy limit was $21 million.
Yeah.
So, the actual tax levy that we used was $20,237, correct?
Um, so, let me pop this slide up here, maybe I'll illustrate it again, or I could have made a mistake on this.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be looking for $500,000 at some point this year, saying, where did we make a mistake?
So, on that slide, our levy limit last year was $20,000,000...
829,98. Now, go to the next slide.
Yeah. 829. Go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
And you, you're saying your actual tax levy for 2018 was $20,237?
Yeah, this is the levy...
Actual tax levy, that's what you...
Yeah, but on this slide here, with the levy limit, it's, it doesn't matter what the actual lev, tax levy is, it's the limit, as long as you tax it below that.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
Okay, but your maximum allowable was 20 million, 21 million? So, I thought you always start with your, your, whatever your tax levy was that you started with, whatever the tax levy was, that's what you start with the next year?
Not the levy...
So, if an actual tax levy, correct?
No, not the levy, the levy limit. So, let me see. 2603...
Still doesn't make sense.
Can I...
Counselor Nash?
Because I think I'm on the same page with you, Mr. Chairman. Maximum allowable levy and levy limit are interchangeable, correct?
No, the maximum...
I think that's where some confusion's been caused.
So, the levy limit is whatever your levy limit was last year, plus 2.5%, plus your new growth.
That's the maximum allowable, right?
No, that's the levy limit. The maximum allowable levy includes any debt exclusions, but that doesn't include, then the following year, you start with the levy limit, not that debt exclusion, because that debt exclusion can go away if, if it's paid off or the debt expires. They're two distinct numbers. They are, they're just, they, they come from DOR forms, and they're two distinct numbers. This is a chart that I just kind of put together and updated. If I made a mistake on a number, and it's not balancing here from years past, I apologize for that, it's just, I'm not following the question exa, I am following the question, but if I made an error on one of these from a year or two ago...
So, and just so I understand, I don't want to belabor the point, I can ask you at a different time, but, so, the levy limit...
Yep.
Is not the actual levy limit that we used last year? It's totally different?
The, no, it's the maximum allowable levy. So, you have your levy limit, and then to that, you add any debt exclusion, and that's voted by the people. Good, different...
Okay.
Yeah, okay, Karen just, so it's a debt exclusion, exactly what I said.
It's a debt exclusion?
Yeah, so like in this particular one, the levy limit this year is 21603.
Yeah.
And below that, you see the debt exclusion of 219. So, next year, on that first line up there, it'll stay, it won't say the bottom number, 21,823, it'll say 21,603, because you used the levy limit. And the debt exclusion is added to that, it may go away at any time, if, I mean, it doesn't go away until it's paid off, but...
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any further questions? Any, anybody else from the audience? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. More comment than question. A lot of folks have spoken with me, and I've been paying attention to Will's presentations for many years, and I appreciate that your format's consistent year over year, makes it very easy to follow along time and again, Will, so thank you for that. Not that it's really an issue, but a lot of folks bring up the point that their concern isn't based on residential classification, commercial, industrial, and personal property, but it, it's very similar to my own concern, and that is that we lump in condos, single-family, two- and three-family, and over-four-unit apartments into a residential classification, and when you look at the numbers, there is no equity in these numbers. Not a problem for you, it's more a problem, in my opinion, from the bigger government, if you will. When a condo pays about $1,800 a year in taxes versus $3,800 on average for a single-family like myself, um, I obviously have concerns. You know, what is the real share, what is the burden on the community, on services, on schools? So, I can tell you that a condo isn't paying its fair share when it gets down to it paying for schools and police and fire. So, I understand all of that, I don't think we have any great grand answers, I'd love to see if there was some mechanism by which we could establish equity. We can't do it within tax classification, based on what you presented here tonight, and year after year, Will. However, I do recognize that it does seem to be inequitable, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I, for one, don't think that we're in a community where it makes sense to change the, the factor between commercial, industrial, and residential. I'm in favor of maintaining the single rate, and I'll say that when we get to the vote. But, um, my real concern is on how we classify residential, and based on the, the average taxes that we see year over year. Yes, some go up a little bit, based on percentages, based on a few dollars, but when you're looking at a baseline, there, there is no equity between 1,800 for a condo and 3,800 for a single-family. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a perfect example of how the dynamics of this. Five years ago, these condos were selling for half of what they're selling for now, and their average tax bill was an even bigger disparity of the way you just described it. So, this year, they're going up kind of dramatically, and I feel for them. On the other hand, the, I'm not going to say they weren't paying their fair share, but the, the, the gap was much, much wider, so they've gone up kind of dramatic to kind of close the gap. But, again, this is in the Board of Assessors, this is state law, and it's actually embedded in the state constitution, the way we have to do all of this, so...
Okay, thank you. Any further? Any further?
Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing portion is closed. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Agenda item 4A, consider accept the joint Town Council Bay Path School committee minute, minutes of Monday, November 26, 2018.
Sub move.
Second. Errors, corrections, remissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Counselor Claire and Counselor Nash abstain. Agenda item 4B, consider accept the Town Council minutes of Monday, November 26, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Errors, corrections, remissions? Counselor Steve?
Couple minor things. Um, on agenda item number 11, just to clarify, I think I may have said to have the town set aside, but I, could you, could we rephrase that as reserved, because that's what I really meant?
Okay.
And, and I think it's fairly clear in the context, but, but just to clarify that. And, uh, the other one, and the other one is a few lines down, it says, uh, where it, when it comes to, to other towns getting involved, I think it just said, another towns getting involved?
Okay.
But, minor things.
Anything further?
And other than that, that's it.
Anything further?
All those in favor as amended? Opposed, abstained? Counselor Nash, Counselor Claire abstain. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, agenda item 5, General Government, Counselor Steve?
Haven't had a meeting, don't have one scheduled.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Pedro is absent, uh, there is a meeting scheduled tomorrow evening at 6:30. So, anybody that's on that Subcommittee, if they could make it, I'd appreciate it. Uh, C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Nothing new to report since, um, last week, when Counselor Daniel, uh, did indicate there was one item on the, the previous agenda. We do have a meeting that is scheduled for December 17th at 6:00 PM, ahead of the Town Council meeting, and that's the meeting I think Counselor Daniel did allude to, uh, at a different point in time, when we've invited Harrington Hospital to come and speak with us, answer some questions about status and future. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have a PND meeting scheduled for December 11th at 6:30. We have a few agenda items, and, but the major one at this point is, will be discussed in the fiscal year 2019, CDPG funds. That should actually probably kick off around 7-ish, uh, because there's going to be a few agenda items before that, but, um, just so everybody's aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manne?
I have a, um, Subcommittee Plan for December 13th at 6:30.
That's the 13th?
Yeah.
6:30?
6:30, to discuss, um, the hiring policy of the Fire Department and the IOD policy.
Thank you. Chairman announcements, a few announcements this evening. Um, one, happy to announce that Dresser Street's open. Like to thank Tully Construction from Southbridge for their great work up there, looks fantastic. I drove by there today, thank you, Tully, for the, uh, holiday banner that they put up there, wishing everybody in town a Merry Christmas, so that was nice to see. On time, on budget, so that's a great thing. So, Counselor Nash, you're, I know you were concerned about that, but we got it done, so, so that's great. Great job by then. The DPW has asked me to announce a reminder that it's alternate side parking and snow emergency time, and, uh, this goes back pursuant to a vote of the special town meeting, special town meeting, a long time ago, should still have town meetings sometimes, December 8th, 1969. And the period of time is December 1st through April 1st, 7:00 PM to 7:00 PM the next day. Parking is only allowed on the odd-numbered side of any townway on odd-numbered days, and on even-numbered side on any townway on even-numbered days. And there's a whole list of other, uh, streets that's posted on the website, but, again, winter parking ban and snow emergency routes are in effect now until April 1st. Just for the counselors, we did get the letter and to your packets that we sent to TP, Department of Public Utilities, so hopefully you all had that, that was asked, to include that in a packet, so you do have that this evening. A reminder, the Lions Club again, and the Police Department, it's a, and that's why Just for the counselors, we did get the letter and to your packets that we sent to TP, Department of Public Utilities, so hopefully you all had that. That was asked, to include that in a packet, so you do have that this evening. Reminder, the Lions Club again, and the Police Department, it's a, and that's why I'm really emphasis is because of the work that's being done by Southbridge Police, Southbridge Cops and Kids, Disturbage Police are involved in this as well, and the Lions Club. Toy Drive collection dates, I know a number of businesses in the town hall have seen collection points. Looking for any donated new unwrapped nonviolent toys by December 21st, all the toys will benefit local families. We've been sharing a lot of that information on the website. Southbridge Credit Union has it on their website, so please consider, if you do have a child that is in need, there's a simple application process, please go to the Southbridge Police Department, fill out the application, we're here. Police Department, Cops and Kids, Lions Club are there to help, so thank you for that. And I think, make sure I have my notes here tonight, and I believe that's all I have this evening. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Couple weeks ago, we announced that the hazardous waste day for the town of Southbridge was canceled by Casella. The reasoning that they had canceled it for the community was due to the fact that they had anticipated not being servicing the town any longer, based on what they believed in their position on the lawsuit, and as I communicated, we worked very hard for the settlement for that, and when they noticed the town that they were not going to provide that benefit to us in December, and the only reason they said they did that was because they had canceled the vendors, we did a lot of pushback, we did not accept what Casella was telling us, we pushed back, asked them for additional dates, either in January, oh, in December, as close to the December 1st date as they could provide. The earliest they could do it was mid-January, and they also proposed paying the community $15,000 if they did not do the January. So, they would either do it in mid-January in the dead of winter, or provide the town compensation of $15,000. After discussion with the manager and our council, given the fact that January is a month that we have no idea what the weather may be, and the amount of people that may go to that facility, we thought it best that we would go for the March date, and the, Casella will compensate the town $15,000 for not providing that service. So, we are monitoring everything with Casella, and we'll hold them to the fire on that. Just one other aside. Spent some communication to the council, council chair, about some issues in the Southbridge schools. Just want to make it public that we are aware with the town manager, we've had discussions with the receiver, we've had very good discussions, I know I have, I believe the town manager has as well, as to what some of the issues are in the schools when it comes to student discipline, culture, and climate. Dr. Valar has been very forthright with me, very transparent, knows what the issues are, but we, as a community, will work with the receiver to improve in whatever we can do with the culture and climate. I think we'll have more on that in the future, but just to let everybody know, we are aware of it, we will work with the schools and be partnership with the state, because we really do have to develop a better relationship with the upper echelons of the state to communicate our concerns, but we will do that, but we are aware of the issues, so please be patient with that. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I first want to give a status of a particular issue that's been important to this town council. As you know, we've been dealing with the Hunter's Ridge subdivision for quite some time. With regard to the roads up there, as you recall, the roads were privately owned, and the town council decided to take control of those roads in order to help all the residents in Hunter's Ridge solve a long-term problem in terms of the condition of the road, and also to provide for snow plowing services up in that area. I want to, I'm happy to inform you that the deeds are finally recorded. The town now is in control of that property, and we will be working with the DPW to start establishing the cost of bringing that route, road up to a town road quality or status, and then next we'll be working with the law firm to deal with the issue of setting up the betterment for that road. But it's really good news for the residents of that community, that the town now is in control of the process, and we'll be moving forward. Secondly, just a couple of compliments. I had an opportunity to see It's a Wonderful Life by Gateway Players at the theater, and I can't say I know that Counselor Steves was there, Counselor Daniel was there. It was a phenomenal play, they did a great job, and it's really nice to see this kind of quality production here in Southbridge. It was an enjoyable show, I think we all had a good time, and kudos to all those that were involved in the play, and to all the people that were there to support the theater. I think it was excellent. The other event that I had an opportunity to be at was the, I think it's the correct name, it's Festival of the Trees. It's a fundraising activity for breast cancer, and it was, I mean, a spectacular event with all kinds of trees that were put out for raffle. There were auctions, thousands of people attended to support the issue of breast cancer research. I want to give compliments to all those who donated to that particular event, to all those who showed up, and all those who worked the event. It was spectacular, and of course, there's no better cause, I think, than helping with the issue of breast cancer. That is all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ms. Manager. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the town manager, I wonder if you knew Rec. Director started today, if you can make a announcement on that end?
The Rec. Director has been hired, I'm not sure what the start date was. I can check and find out tomorrow what the actual start date is.
Okay. Can you announce who that person is? I only knew about it from an email. I wonder if the community knows?
Yeah, I, you know, I know, you know her name, because I don't remember.
In fact, I was doing Wheels on Wheels, and she walked in this morning. It's Suzie Gears. She said it this morning.
What's her name?
I can't hear you.
Suzie Gears.
It's Suzie Gears, she said it this morning.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, should that appointment have come through the town council?
That is not an appointment that is subject to confirmation by the council.
Oh, okay, because I believe that Mr. Rodenfeld came through the town council, didn't he? Oh, no, his position did. I apologize.
Yeah.
So, I am, I do know Suzie, and congratulations, Ms. Gears.
Okay. Any further questions, the man? Okay, thank you. Item 8, presentation, unless anybody wants to hear Will's presentation again, we had it in the public hearing.
I do, it's on the agenda.
Agenda item 9, vote to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0 for tax purposes. The Board of Assessor recommends a yes vote for a single tax rate.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 10, vote to adopt varied classification of property for tax purposes, including open space discount and residential exception, exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, this is to...
Should we do this by roll call?
We can, yes. So, it'll be a yes or a no, correct?
Right.
Yes or a no? Have any?
These get included in what we put our recommendation there.
Well, I appreciate that, so, yes, we'll make sure that...
So, the state really wants to make sure you know exactly what you're doing, and you stamped it with emphatically, so a no vote is for a single tax rate?
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions? Discussion, roll call? No.
Yes, no, no.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Jovan?
No.
Counselor Manah?
No.
Counselor Morales?
No.
Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Okay. Agenda item 11, vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I just wanted to ask, Will, what would the, what are the different classes of property, what could those constitute?
I'm sorry, I have...
What are the different classes of property?
Oh, there's the residential class, then there's the commercial, there's the industrial, and the personal property.
So, didn't we already vote to establish the classification factor of 1?
Correct, it's a redundant question.
So, it's a redundant question?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Any further discussion? Counselor Steves?
Just a quick comment, I'm just curious. Will, I've always, I know we've always done it this way, but I've, some of the other towns that I've seen, as you know, I'm a reporter, I've seen several other towns, I've never seen another town that does the redundant votes like we do.
I'm not sure why.
Most of them, they just do one vote, and sometimes I've seen, and they go, I know that they're not quite doing it right, but...
I'm not sure why. I know in Southbridge, since before I did this job, since the 80s and 90s, we've always done these four votes, and when I submit these to the state, I have to have the, all four of these votes notarized by the town clerk and sent to them, so I don't know why any other community would do anything else, but that's what they've always told us to do.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, two quick things. First of all, just for information purposes, Will, has it ever been your experience that the town of Southbridge had anything different from a single tax rate?
Never, I don't think they were.
And you've been a resident all your life, I think?
I have, it's always been a single tax rate.
Okay, great. And second of all, I'd like to echo, I think that everything related to tax should be a roll call vote, so if you'll indulge, once we get done with this, I might move for reconsideration, if that's your preferred method.
That's fine, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further, Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I don't know, I've been back and forth on whether or not to talk about any of this, between this and also agenda item number nine, obviously. You know, this year, we're seeing for the commercial and the industrial, a 3.42% and a 3.05% decrease. And with our single-family homeowners, we're seeing a 5.7% increase. If we, if we change the percentage from the 20.8, or 20.38 for the tax rate using one, having the same for all, or splitting it between the residential tax rate and the commercial tax rate with 19.81 and the 22.42, that's the 10% shift, then your single-family homeowners would only see a 2.75% increase, and our businesses would see a 5.89 and a 6.65% increase, respectively, for commercial and industrial. The reason that I'm thinking about it more this year, I think, as a viable option to at least open the conversation and talk about splitting the tax rate, we have one TIF on, obviously, the commercial class that will be falling off next year. So, in 2019, we'll see an automatic increase just for its expert lasers. In the next five years, we'll see, right now, we're putting in place, or at least talking about putting in place, a TIF for United Lens, and there's also a TIF that we approve for Hardline Heat Treat.
Point of information, we've already approved it, I mean that you were not there.
Okay, I apologize. So, we've already approved TIFs for both of those, and after the first five years of these proposed TIFs, then you'll start to see an increase in tax revenue from these businesses. So, we're seeing growth, or expected growth, that we can count on as a community in the commercial and the industrial sector over the next five years. And I think that even though the single, the single-family taxpayers don't have any kind of option to put those increases into anything else, you know, there are people on fixed incomes, there are people getting priced out of their homes, we hear it all the time as counselors, and, you know, a 6% increase for somebody who, who may not have seen any kind of increase in valuation or increase in equity on their home is a hard pill to swallow.
Counselor Claire, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we've already voted for a 1.0 tax classification.
Yeah, I get it.
So, if you want to bring this up for further discussion, I appreciate it, but we've already voted to establish a single tax rate.
Okay.
So, I mean, unless the motion is to reconsider.
Well, the motion on the floor right now is to vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property, and I think that what I'm discussing right now is, you know...
We've already done that, when we voted to tax classification factor of 1.0.
Okay, somebody's also mentioned that they're going to be bringing it up for reconsideration for a roll call, so, you know, I think that it's relevant to meet speaking, but that's okay, I'll stop.
No, I do understand, Counselor, but we've already established tax classification of a 1.0, that's the percentage. We've already established that, so it would have to be taken up at that time. We'd have to reconsider it, if I'm correct, we'd have to reconsider it at that motion of nine, not on this.
Well, we can, we can discuss, we can discuss adopting a single tax rate for all classes of property, which is what I was discussing.
But if you want to talk about the rate, you have to go back to agenda item nine, because that's the rate question.
It's the rate, though, that vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property.
Thank you.
I respectfully disagree, but that's all.
I'm just, if we're going to reconsider it, we should reconsider it at nine.
Okay, but, okay, then, I figured that I would make my point, seeing as how we're...
And we discussed it in the public hearing portion as well, about the differences, so I don't mean to be abrupt, but if you can get to your point.
My point was that I believe that shifting the tax rate and not adopting a single tax rate for all classes of property may be a prudent thing to do, looking forward into the future and the five-year outlook, and knowing that there's additional revenue in the commercial and industrial sector of this town that could eventually bring the tax rates back in line and back even, so that it would be a very temporary way to ease the burden on the single-family taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Canoyer, it's possible that next year, the commercial end could get whacked, and the residential could go down, based on that growth, correct?
It is, it's possible. I wouldn't speculate that that's going to happen, but I would say, next year is our revaluation year, so it's a year when we tear everything apart much more than we do in the non-revaluation years. So, next year would be a year when you'd have a lot more... We're going to be coming to you with a contract for a revaluation company, where it's going to be a large sum of money for you to approve and so forth, because they go in, and they tear, we tear everything apart much more, so we'll have a much better picture. The interim years like now is, we do it statistically, in the reval year next year, we'll, so, again, I'm not, I'm just simply saying, we'll have a lot more data next year.
Right. And Counselor Claire, I do appreciate your point. As a homeowner, I own property, several councils here own property, we have that tax burden, I understand that. I have family members that are on fixed incomes, it is a tough position to be. I also look at all the commercial properties that are empty in town, and if we want to attract businesses, and we set a different rate and put the burden on the commercial, I mean, that's also something you have to look at. So, I think next year, if we look at the commercial, I don't want to pay more taxes, nobody wants to pay more taxes, but we're also setting the tax rate on a levy that was done last year by last year's councilor, not this year's budget. This isn't based on this year, this was all set based on a budget that was approved by councilors last year. So, last year, they should have thought about what the tax implication should have been, because this happens every single year. We get to the point in December where the decisions that council has made in May affects the sitting counselor now, because they didn't think about having those conversations in May, when they develop budgets, when they sit there and say, I want to hire X number of employees. That's when you have the discussions. That's when we should be starting the discussions now in January about what we do with budgets, and if we want to be fiscally prudent as to reducing the tax burden on our citizens, it's through the budget process as well, because it happens every year, I see it every year for the last 35 years as an adult in this town, every year, it gets to this point, and we're arguing about what the tax burden should be, based on somebody else's decisions the year before. Am I correct, Mr. Canoyer?
Pretty much, yeah.
Pretty much, thank you. So, that's incumbent on us now, if we want to reduce the tax burden on citizens, to really take a look at hard-line budgets and work with the real estate to save that tax classification. Further discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Counselor Claire?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to our discussion, I move to reconsider item number nine, a vote to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0 for tax purposes.
It's a motion to reconsider, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Nash? All in favor of reconsidering? Opposed. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had indicated during discussion, I would prefer that we go with a roll call on any such vote that is related to tax classification, so at this time, I would bring back up item number nine and move to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0 for tax purposes.
Any further, any further discussion on that? Well, we already reconsidered, so we're, the motion's before us, so is there any discussion on the question?
Oh, it is. So, I don't have to make that motion?
No.
Okay.
Because we, we made a motion to reconsider it, so we're reconsidering this article, so that passed, that we're reconsidering, so now we can discuss it again.
Fine as kind, then I withdraw, thank you.
So, any other discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Morales? Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Claire?
No.
Motion carries. Agenda 12, vote to appropriate $150,000 from overlay surplus to reduce the FY 2019 tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Will, can you just explain this to me?
Yeah, so, a negative vote indicates you don't want to split the tax rate, so it's...
No, 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 the $150,000 from overlay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's hard to hear in here, I understand.
All night long, I have a cold, and my ear's blocked, that's why I'm... All night long, I have a cold and my ears are blocked, that's why I'm struggling to hear, I'm so sorry. So what this is, every year, the Board of Assessors raises money for the overlay. The number has been $200,000 for as long as I've been here. What that $200,000 is meant to cover is all the exemptions that the town grants, the senior tax rebate program, and any abatements that are granted, and any appeals to the appellate tax board or the courts on values. So, in years past, these would be, these accounts were by individual year. With the Municipal Modernization Act, that now goes into one big overlay reserve account. So we keep enough in there to cover any abatements and appeals that are out there on real estate or personal property tax, or any outstanding personal property tax. This right here is a surplus that we don't need to hold against any of those liabilities. So where the Board of Assessors has voted to release it to the general fund, you can appropriate it for any purpose. In this particular case, it was planned at budget time as part of the budget-setting process to lower the tax rate to what it is right here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question, Will. Generally speaking, how much do you end up having in terms of abatements and exemptions a year?
Can be substantial, we just settled at least $100,000 to $150,000 per year. And we just settled a major, major case a few months ago, which allowed the freeing up of this money. We had a multi-year appellate tax board case with one of our large taxpayers in town, which we settled, which, again, freed up this money that we were holding in reserve against, you know, a loss. So, does that answer the question? But, like I said, $100,000 to $150,000 a year.
That's an average, okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? We'll do this as a roll call, because it's appropriation.
Counsel Jovan?
Can you, I can't hear you.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel O'Clare?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Nana, Mr. Ball, present.
Excuse me, Counsel Jovan, so could I pass this sheet around?
To sign?
Yeah, and I have to send it into the Department of Revenue, on the second page, if you all can sign. Thank you. The sheet, by the way, indicates that a classification hearing was held. You've been advised of the excess levy capacity, and the votes were taken on these classification issues. Thank you.
Agenda item 13, and to the public, I apologize, I'm not sure, I should have caught this earlier, why Citizens Forum was mixed in with the Agenda items, but Counsel, Mr. Marquetti?
No, I'm not a counselor.
Well, almost, right?
Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. FYI, we did have a split tax rate. I think Rennie Tremblay was the council chair at the time, so I remember. I remember when we did have a split tax rate in Southbridge. The reason I came up here for Citizens Forum is that some people on the social media asked me about our cable contract. Do we have a cable contract coming up? Are you going to hold a forum? I said that I thought we do have a cable contract coming up. I hope I didn't misspeak, but I told them I would ask you, Mr. Town Manager, and that's why I came up to ask.
Yes, I believe we do, Ms. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mike, the answer is yes, within the next two to three years, we do have a cable contract coming up, so I've received a letter from the cable company who wants to start that negotiation process soon, but as of right now, we have not started that yet.
Okay, thank you, but you will have a public forum on that, right?
I'm sure we will, there's a lot of discussions, it's one of the unique contracts in that there's always a special lawyer that comes in that deals with those specific type of contracts. So as we start that process, we'll work through the process and let the public know what we're doing.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wish to come forward? Seeing none. Agenda item 14, vote to reduce the FY 2019 appropriation for account number 1.512.5110, health salaries and wages from $289,984 to $216,984, a reduction of $70,000. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steves?
I'm sorry, was that a subcommittee meeting that I didn't go to, or what, but what is this for?
Yeah, was this through a subcommittee, because I don't recall.
I remember this one.
Karen? Oh, that's right, she did ask me to put it on the agenda, and because it was a reduction of salary. Thank you.
So what this is going to do is bring the revenue and expenses more into line. The Health Department, we had budgeted the landfill monitor for a full year to have the revenue come in and the expenses be paid. And then we also budgeted for the recycling coordinator, but he left in August. So if we leave the numbers as it is, the net is going to be zero, the change, that the revenue's going down by 70,000, the expense is going down 70. But if we left it, it would have looked like we had a revenue shortage of 70,000, even though the expenses wouldn't be spent. So this brings it more into line as to what the revenues are going to be and what we're actually going to spend out of the expense accounts.
Where does this 70,000 go to? Anywhere?
No, the revenue is going to be reduced for the reimbursement from Casella for the landfill.
From, okay, so this was simply reimbursement account?
Yep, so then that's there, the revenue's coming down, the expense is coming down, no effect to the tax levy or tax rate.
Okay. So it was in another tax account?
Just housekeeping.
Huh?
Just housekeeping.
Just housekeeping, okay, that makes sense, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call on that, please.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel O'Clare?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes. Agenda item 15, vote to ratify a two-year insurance renewal for our property liability and workman's comp with MIA, MIIA, for FY 2020 and FY 2021, which includes a rate chain of 0% for both fiscal years.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? All right, roll call.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel O'Clare?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I need to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and add an Agenda item, which would be called 15A, Agenda item, and I can give the language to the secretary after. Vote to approve a change order of up to $20,000 to Borg's Construction for the Moon and Laurel Street Project Drainage Project Contract for the replacement of a sewer main and raising of varied sewer manholes at the rate of $120 per liner. Is that linear foot?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be linear, right, not liner? Linear foot for the sewer main replacement at $900 per manhole. Final cost to be determined based on actual work completed. So is there a motion to suspend rules and add that Agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on suspending rules and adding Agenda? All those in favor of adding the Agenda item? Okay. Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve a change order of up to $20,000 to Borg's Construction. Do you need me to read it again? Is there a second discussion? Heather?
I have some good news. We can actually reduce the amount to $7,500 from the $20,000, because I don't know if you saw my subsequent, my second email. The Sewer Department was able to inspect the remaining 100 feet of pipe, and only two feet of it were impacted, which reduces the amount we have to replace. So, I feel comfortable that we'll reduce the number down to that smaller amount.
To 7,500?
Yes.
Nana, is consent to change that number to 7,500?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Manna?
No.
All set?
On paper.
So we'll change that to, change order up to 7,500. And this was put onto as emergency, because you're working on this now, correct, just for the public?
Correct. The work has just been completed for the drainage, and the inspection of the sewer line was just done after they did the drainage, because they had to blast up there. And it was recognized after that inspection. The contractor will be replacing a portion of it, but it didn't make sense to replace half a line that he damaged without replacing the other 55 feet that has cracking in it. So, we asked him for a change order at the time, this will allow him to pave the road in quick manner. He'll be able to go in there, replace this line, and then do the paving, which is what's pushing it. And any other time or season, we probably would have been able to wait the two weeks, but we're bumping up against the plant's closing. Right now, we have a good window of work, the plants will stay open for a little bit longer, so he'll be able to get pavement.
Okay. And that's why it was put on as an emergency Agenda item, so that they could get it done while the roads open? Counsel Steves?
Just to clarify, if I remember correctly from your emails, you said that this is actually entirely being funded by the MassWorks grant anyway, right? This isn't tax money?
Correct, this is in tax, this is coming from MassWorks. We'll be able to cover it under change order of MassWorks. That grant, we have about $100,000 that wasn't, because of the prices of the project came in cheaper, that underneath that grant, so we'll be able to do the change order.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Nana, Mr. Ball, present. Counsel's Forum? Counsel Manna, we'll start with you tonight.
I have some speechless time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not. First of all, I would like to thank you for announcing that I was excused, because I had advertised that I'd be away last meeting for a month or so. I enjoyed my time away, I actually got to visit family in Texas. Very good visit, and I definitely came home refreshed and full of vigor. So, thank you for that. I'd like to make mention of a topic that hopefully we can discuss. I'm going to make recommendation, once again, that maybe we bring this back to general government at some point, and that is the topic of recording clerks with subcommittees. It's ridiculous, the status of our minutes, as we all know. DPW in particular, it's been more than a month, as you'd requested, we still don't have the minutes. And frankly, I wish Counsel DePietro were here, because I would respectfully request that a change be made at DPW. We can discuss that later. Second of all tonight, I want to thank Chief Shane Woodson of the Police Department. SPD has been responsive, as has the Traffic Commission, including Director Blakely of the DPW, to at least some items that I had brought to them regarding speed enforcement, in particular on Charlton Street and Dennison Drive and other areas. The chief, a week or two ago, before Thanksgiving, had presented some data to me just in passing to indicate that indeed the speed detectors were noticing that people were far exceeding the speed limit. In one case, it was over 70 miles per hour, I think in a 25 or 30 mile per hour zone. So, I appreciate the stepped-up enforcement, and if you need my support, you got to throw the book at anybody violating the public trust in doing such dastardly acts, especially when children and elderly and animals are concerned. I'd like to remind everybody that the town looks absolutely fantastic with the Christmas decorations down on the Common. Residentially, up and down South Street, I love seeing the Christmas lights, and I probably lack Christmas spirit more than anybody in town. It's never been my thing, but I love seeing the lights, and the town looks fantastic this year. I'd also like to elaborate very quickly on something that the chairman brought up during chairman's announcements, and that would involve issues at the high school, and not in particular. The town manager and the council chair can deal with conversations with the superintendent, but I was privileged to attend the presentation by Jeff Lassie, brought forth by the Substance Abuse Advisory Committee and Deputy Chief Jose Dinghy a couple of weeks ago. And it was a very, very good presentation. It's a heck of a strong message. And I tried to record the presentation, and I think I did a pretty darn good job doing that. But to go back and watch that and to hear what transpired was absolutely embarrassing. Discipline starts at home, and these schools need as much support as we can give them. That was a disgrace, quite frankly. So thank you for bringing up the concerns and for dealing with them. The last thing that I'll bring up tonight is that actually, I won't, I already made mention during the town manager's announcements that I wanted to congratulate Suzie for being appointed Recreation Director by the town manager. I think she's a great fit, and she's going to be very, very aggressive and energetic, and she'll pick right up where that program needs to be started again. So thank you for that appointment, Ron. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Morales?
I am outside, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
I have one thing, I just want to thank the Board of Health and the director, or the inspector, Mr. Pelletier, for finally putting some of the blighted properties in town online. You can check it out on their webpage, under a tab, it says Blighted Properties Online. They are continually building on that, they started off with about four properties. I think they're adding to that as they go along. So if you need to look at that information, it's public information. So, if you want to take a look at that, please do so, and I want to thank them again, that's all I have.
Counsel Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have anything this week.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes, I'd just like to remind the people at town, or advise the people at town that we heard from three department heads tonight during the presentations, and that they made fine presentations, and I'd just like to compliment them on their continued good work to the town, and advise the townsfolk that we do have very good people working for us here, and that you have every reason to be very proud of the work that they are doing. On a different note, I'd like to remind people that it's the holiday season, and that the Gateway Players put on a wonderful performance over the weekend, but this isn't their only performance, they perform six or seven times a year, and you really should keep them in mind in terms of having good local entertainment at a good price. And also, along with the Gateway Players, we have the Wells Arts Center that is also doing a lot of good for the community, a lot of varied programming, and definitely something worth investigating. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, I was going to say something about the Gateway Players, too, because I was there earlier this weekend, too, and that was great. And it always is, I've never seen that show down there. So if you even have a chance to do some local theater, you should check out what our community actually has, because we've got a lot of good stuff going on. Also, I wanted to add a couple of quick things going on at the library. On Thursday at 6:30, the Parish's Madrigal Singers are doing a program at the library. So for a little bit of a twist on Christmas music, if you haven't heard that stuff in a while. And next Thursday, there's two things going on that are unfortunately conflicting at the library. One is the film Ocean's Eight, and the other one is a talk with author Lee Grossman, who writes fantasy novels, if you're interested in that. And that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you.
And the next meeting is going to be Monday, December 17th, at 7:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, again, Counsel Nash has the Education Human Services, at what time is that?
6:00 PM, December 17th.
Okay. And I urge anybody that, if anybody wishes to come to that subcommittee meeting, because it is in subcommittee, to listen to Ed Moore at the hospital and what their plans are with the recent closing of the pediatric wing, and some other things, and talk in the community about the hospital's future in town. I urge you to come to that at 6:00 PM. Agenda 18, vote to enter an executive session according to Mass General Law Chapter 38, 21, subsection A, to conduct town manager's contract negotiations into adjournment.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel O'Clare?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Good night, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.